I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'm sorry we were a little bit late. Thank you all for waiting. Would you please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business is welcoming our new board member, Dr. Sheldon Jen.
So we are going to administer the oath of office for Dr. Jen. We're gonna come up front. So I thank you, everybody, for coming for Dr. Jen's swearing in. But it is a great pleasure that we introduce our new Board of Education trustee, Dr. Sheldon Jen. Dr. Jen is an award-winning educator. Currently in his 16th year as Professor of Public Policy at San Francisco State University. He primarily teaches coursework for students in both the Masters of Public Administration and Doctor of Education EDD programs. Much of the coursework Dr. Jen teaches is directly relevant to the operations of a school district. In addition to being nationally recognized, a nationally recognized educational researcher, Dr. Jen has found time to participate in governing boards, such as the San Francisco State Academic Senate. Sounds like a lot of fun. And graduate councils. A parent of two school-aged children, Dr. Jen stated in his application for the board position that he hopes to bring all of his experiences to Petaluma City Schools to help deliver high-impact education to Petaluma's families. Tonight with Dr. Jen is his wife, Lainey.
Lainey.
Lainey. Hey, Lainey. Who is... In addition to raising two amazing children, I added that part. She teaches adult ESL and citizenship for Petaluma Adult School. Formerly, Lainey was a high school French teacher in the San Francisco Unified School District in Georgia. We also have, I believe, tonight Sheldon's children, Lyndon. Lyndon is 7th grader at Kenilworth, where he enjoys robotics. Last year, he won the South County Spelling Bee. He's in the Marimba Youth Band. And Dahlia. 5th grader at Loma Vista Immersion Academy. She loves cooking and astronomy and last month won a telescope from the Sonoma County Astronomical Society. It is with great pleasure that we administer the oath of office for trustee, Dr. Sheldon Jen. So please raise your hand. Repeat after me. "I, Sheldon Jen..."
"I, Sheldon Jen."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear."
"...that I will support and defend..."
"That I will support and defend."
"...the Constitution..."
"The Constitution."
"...of the State of California..."
"Of the State of California."
"...against all enemies..."
"Against all enemies."
"...foreign and domestic..."
"Foreign and domestic."
"...that I will bear true faith..."
"That I will bear true faith..."
"...and allegiance..."
"And allegiance."
"...to the Constitution of the United States..."
"To the Constitution of the United States."
"...and the Constitution of the State of California."
"And the Constitution of the State of California."
"...and that I take this obligation freely..."
"And I take this obligation freely."
"...without any mental reservation..."
"Without any mental reservation."
"...or purpose of evasion..."
"Or purpose of evasion."
"...and that I will well..."
"And that I will well."
"...and faithfully discharge..."
"And faithfully discharge."
"...the duties upon which I am about to enter."
"The duties upon which I am about to enter."
Congratulations.
Thank you.
He's official.
Okay. Adoption and approval of the agenda for April 23rd, 2019.
I move to approve the agenda for April 23rd, 2019.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Adoption, approval... Oh, we already did that. Special recognition... Sorry. Reports and presentations.
We're gonna start with 7.2.
Students of the Month. And Joanna. Trustee Ellen Willby.
Please correct me if I get your student's name wrong, because it's been known to happen. So we'll start with Kenilworth. Owen Bennett.
Can I say it up?
Yeah.
Is there somebody here?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Grace, and I'm introducing April Student of the Month for Kenilworth. Kenilworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our April Student of the Month, Owen Bennett. Owen was chosen Student of the Month by his team of teachers because he is one of Kenilworth's most outstanding student athletes. Owen, who has maintained a 4.0 grade point average, is described by his teachers as hard-working, respectful, polite, and always willing to work with and help his classmates. Ms. Mamaris, Owen's accelerated math teacher, shared Owen is an excellent math student. He works hard every single day, both in the classroom and at home, to make sure he's turning his best work. Owen is a great student, and I enjoy being his teacher. Owen's PE teacher, Mr. Stanley, was also eager to share his praise of Owen. Owen always gives 100% effort and attention to detail to the tasks and challenges we have in class. He is self-motivated, self-directed, and sets a great example for his peers. Owen is a pleasure to have in class. Mr. Eckling, Owen's history teacher, enthusiastically added, "Owen is an excellent student who can always be counted on to provide excellent insight during any classroom discussion. He is always prepared for class and has a work ethic that will lead him well into the future. Owen is well-liked by his peers and quick to offer assistance when needed. Not only is Owen an outstanding student, but he has also been a valuable member of the Kenilworth Cross-Country Team and Track Team. Owen runs both the 1600 and 1800 meter races for Colts and will be a valuable member of the Casa Grande High School teams beginning next fall. When Owen is not blazing the track for Kenilworth, he enjoys playing soccer, badminton, and ping pong. Impressively, Owen has even found time to raise money for Alzheimer's research by participating in Alzheimer's Awareness Walk. Owen is not sure where he would like to attend college, but he noted that science is his favorite subject. You can be sure wherever Owen goes to college, he will be successful and he will be running. Owen's mom Lisa added, "We are very excited and very happy for Owen. Owen's hard work through the years has made him the student he is today. We are very proud of him." Congratulations, Owen.
So with Owen's parents, family, friends, please stand. All right. So next is...
Savannah LaPrada.
Savannah LaPrada.
Kenilworth Junior High School is proud to introduce our April Student of the Month, Savannah LaPrada. Savannah has been chosen Student of the Month by her team of teachers because she is one of Kenilworth's brightest personalities and most inspiring success stories. Savannah's work ethic, positive attitude, and perseverance have all resulted in an outstanding 8th grade year. Savannah's teachers were eager to sing her praises. Ms. Rutter, Savannah's math teacher, showed that Savannah is polite, kind, respectful, and has a great sense of humor. Savannah works well with everyone, does her work on time, and puts in the effort to make every assignment good. Savannah is amazing. Savannah's science teacher, Mr. Schmidt, added, "Savannah works hard on her academics in my class. Savannah always has a smile, is full of energy, and is a sought-after team player. Savannah is a great student." Mrs. Farrell, Savannah's English teacher, was also enthusiastic in her praise of Savannah. Savannah is a pleasure to have in class and is extremely well-liked by her peers. She brings endless energy and ideas into my English class. Savannah is creative, cooperative, and independent. She has been an outstanding role model and a wonderful collaborator. Outside of school, Savannah has played in Petaluma Soccer and Softball Leagues and may pursue them in high school as well. Savannah is also a dedicated gamer who enjoys a good game of Fortnite or Minecraft. After school, Savannah might like to attend Humboldt State University. After graduating from college, Savannah would like to be a professional gamer. Savannah's mom Molly added, "We are very proud of Savannah. We really admire her persistence and determination. Savannah is truly a shining star. Congratulations, Savannah."
Savannah's family should be seen to be acknowledged as well. So next up, we have Petaluma Junior High School. So first, we have Harrison Williams.
We are excited to present Harrison Williams is one of our April 2019 Students of the Month. Harrison is a very conscientious, motivated, and ethical student athlete. Harrison was born on July 8th, 2005, in Long Park, California. He is a quiet leader who takes his academics and his sports competitions very seriously. Harrison is a hard worker who has earned all As this year so far. He challenges himself with Math 1 and honors English, and is particularly gifted in math. His teachers recognize his strengths. His science teacher comments that Harrison is always on top of things. He has a great understanding of concepts and explains them well in his writing. For his elective this year, Harrison is an Office Aide. This is a job that holds a great deal of responsibility. The Office staff notes that Harrison is completely trustworthy, reliable, and discreet with any situations that happen in the Office that may be sensitive or confidential in nature. In addition to his academic life, Harrison is involved in several sports programs. He plays football, baseball, and lacrosse for the community leagues. Harrison also served as the captain of the Petaluma Junior High School Wrestling Team this year, leading his teammates to a first place in the Sonoma County League Finals. He is a strong runner and is currently on the track and field team. As a 5th and 6th grader, Harrison won first place in the Eastside Relays in the Distance Med League. In his last year as an elementary student at Corona Creek, he ran a communal... communal... totaly of 119 miles, or the equivalent of four marathons. Harrison also enjoys paintball, snowing, dirt biking, playing video games, the St. James Youth Group, and hanging out with his friends. His parents are super proud of everything that Harrison has accomplished and look forward to what his future holds. Harrison is excited about high school and plans to keep his straight A status. Stay healthy and athletic and be the best he can be. We are all very proud of Harrison and how he presents himself. He is a model student and wonderful human being, and we are pleased to have him represent Petaluma Junior High School as the Student of the Month.
Harrison's friends and family, please stand and be acknowledged. All right. So next, we have... Kira Bergstrom.
We are proud to present Kira Bergstrom as one of our April 2019 Students of the Month. She is a highly capable and motivated individual and has a notable... and is a notable student athlete. Kira was born on December 17th, 2005, in Fort Lewis, near Tacoma, Washington, and came to this district in 2017 after having lived and attended school in Germany. Kira is a role model in the classroom. She is consistently on the honor roll and earned Student of the Month while in 6th grade at Wilson Elementary. She works hard to earn good grades and is a great help to other students who may not understand the material and is motivated to maintain high grades. Her educational goal is to continue to earn good grades and eventually be accepted into UC Davis to study neurology. Her math teacher comments, "Kira is a personal and exemplary student. She is diligent in getting her work done, both in class and at home. She is curious and pursues academic excellence by going the extra mile to learn concepts. But what makes her outstanding is her generosity in sharing her discipline and gifts. In math, she can work with any group of students and drive that group to better performance, helping students who need it and focusing students who are easily distracted. Kira improves our student body through personal excellence and a positive influence on others." Her science teacher adds, "Kira is sharp and works with other classmates to help them understand the material." In addition to her academic strengths, Kira is a natural athlete. She is currently on the PJ Jazz Track Team. She also competes on a community swim team and snowboards during the winter. During the summers, Kira helps her aunt with the daycare she needs. Her parents add testimony to her character. Kira has always been a sweet, kind, and shy person. She is a genuinely caring individual with empathy and compassion towards others. We are very proud of her. We are blessed to have her as our daughter, and we love her exceptionally. We are honored to present the kind and intelligent Kira Bergstrom to the board and are pleased to have her represent Petaluma Junior High School as Student of the Month.
Kira's friends and family, please stand and be acknowledged. Up next, we have Casa Grande High School. Okay, so first up, we have Caitlin Wong.
Hello, everyone. Caitlin Wong is an extremely caring and active student in the community who loves what she does and takes pride in her accomplishments. She is a dedicated musician and began learning to play the alto saxophone in 5th grade. Caitlin continues to play today and is a saxophone section leader for Casa's symphonic and marching bands. She also has served Casa's band as secretary for the music program these past two years. Caitlin has been a Girl Scout for 13 years, which has allowed her to do many amazing things. She loves volunteering and giving back to her community, whether it's through selling cookies or hosting events for younger Girl Scouts. Caitlin's favorite experiences as a Girl Scout have been being a counselor and inspiring young girls at camps that she attended when she was little and traveling with her troop to Belize for a week to explore and help the local communities during this past summer. She plans on being part of Girl Scout community for life. Caitlin is a passionate volleyball player and has played for Casa's varsity team for three years as the starting setter. Caitlin has also played for various traveling club teams for the past three years. She was Casa's team captain this year and led her team to compete in the quarter semifinals, an achievement that Casa has obtained in the past six years. Caitlin also works two jobs, as an employee at the Petaluma Pie Company and as a clerical assistant for a local accountant. Despite her heavy AP workload, dedication to multiple extracurriculars, and two jobs, Caitlin always makes sure she has quality time to enjoy with her family and best friends. She is a determined scholar and a hard worker, two qualities she is proud of and which will contribute to her future success. Caitlin plans on attending UC Davis and hopes to serve a career as a physical therapist. Congratulations, Caitlin.
We'd also like to acknowledge Caitlin's friends and family. If you could please stand. So up next, also from Casa, is Camille Barlow.
Camille Barlow has been a determined student at Casa Grande for the past four years. She is thankful to have been given the opportunity to expose herself to countless subjects through the school and junior college. During the past four years, she has placed herself in clubs that benefit both her and the community. She has been both the secretary and the treasurer for the National Honor Society and a strong member in the Key Club. National Honor Society has given her numerous opportunities to help those in need, especially after the devastating California fires. She is proud of herself for joining the varsity dance team senior year and getting outside her comfort zone. Camille cannot wait for the upcoming experiences waiting for her at San Diego State University and is ecstatic to begin the next chapter of her life at such a wonderful university.
Camille's friends and family, please stand and be acknowledged. And next up is Petaluma High School. All right. So first up, we have Colton Prieto.
Colton Prieto is a senior at Petaluma High School that has participated in 12 seasons of sports year-round for the past four years. He has been committed to athletics since junior high, being part of wrestling, football, and swim team for the last four years. He has also brought into his leadership experience by joining Link Crew his junior year as well as being a team captain for the swim and wrestling. Regardless of all his time committed to athletics and leadership, Colton has maintained his place on the honor roll for the last four years. He is very grateful for the opportunities and memories Petaluma High School has offered him and would like to thank his parents, teachers, and coaches for helping him succeed all throughout high school. Next fall, he will be attending Northern Arizona University to study exercise science with the intention of pursuing a career in firefighting. He will always be thankful for his high school being such a big part of his life.
So Colton's friends and family, please stand and be acknowledged. Up also from Petaluma High School is Nicolette Starkey.
Nicolette Starkey is a senior at Petaluma High School where she has taken various honors and AP courses as well as being an active member in school leadership for the past four years. She has filled the roles of rally commissioner her junior year and secretary her senior year at the PHS Associated Student Body as well as actively participated in Link Crew her junior year. During her time at PHS, she has participated in a total of eight seasons of school sports, which included basketball, softball, soccer, and cross-country. She has filled her summers with volunteering at Los Vasadas 4-H Camp. She is now one of two teen directors who plan to lead the week-long sleepaway camp for kids ages 9 through 14. She is very grateful for all the amazing opportunities that Petaluma High School has offered her and would like to thank her parents, teachers, and other school faculty for the unmatched support that she credits all of her success to. Next fall, she will attending University of California, Santa Barbara, to study psychology and brain sciences with the intention of pursuing a career in school counseling, although this is subject of change. While she would love staying at PHS... while she would love to stay at PHS Trojan forever, she feels ready to take on her next chapter. The countless hours of studying, playing sports, and volunteering has prepared her well for her future endeavors.
Nicolette's family, please stand and be acknowledged as well. Next up, we have Petaluma Accelerated Charger School. So first up, we have Eduardo Rodriguez Nego.
Eduardo Rodriguez is a stellar example of a student who understands the importance of a good education. He has parents who support and push him to be the best he can be in and out of the classroom. Eduardo is quick to fix and learn from his mistakes, which shows his amazing work ethic to never have missing assignments. He has an amazing strength in mathematics as material comes so easy for him to understand and learn. Eduardo is proud of his heritage and has embraced his native language by acquiring a high level of proficiency in both Spanish and English. Around campus, Eduardo is always polite and cheerful to his peers and teachers. He is always eager to help in the classroom and take on leadership roles. Outside of school, Eduardo is always eager to help in the classroom... oops, sorry. Eduardo volunteers at the Boys and Girls Club helping younger kids with homework and sports. Eduardo is a fantastic soccer player on a travel league team. Regardless of his extracurricular commitments, he always sees school as his number-one importance. PAX is grateful to have the opportunity to teach such a dedicated student. Eduardo, thank you for always trying your best and showing us how great you can be. And thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Rodriguez for holding Eduardo accountable and supporting his education.
Eduardo's family, please stand and be acknowledged. So also from PAX, we have May McCarthy.
May McCarthy is a very creative, kind, and caring student of PAX. She consistently holds a 4.0 GPA with her high-level level of dedication for school. May seems to enjoy the process of learning and does not rush through her work, always completing tasks with 110%. Currently, May is on the advanced robotics team, building a working train and designing the landscape at Travel Mom. May is an amazing... has an amazing athletic artistic talent that she so graciously... bleh, sorry. So graciously shares with our school community. She just finished up designing and facilitating the creation of the set for our school performance of Chitty Chitty Bang Bang. Her beautiful work is definitely professional and impressive, to say the least. We're all certain she'll be famous for her talent someday. Outside of school, May volunteers with the Art Docent Program, helping to create art lessons for teachers to use in their classroom. Her time spent with this program will continue to benefit our community for many years to come. May's work in the classroom and sweet and kind presence around campus has helped make PAX a better place. We are sad to let her continue onto high school in the fall, but we're so honored to have the opportunity to teach her at PAX. Thank you, May, for being an amazing kid, and thanks to Mr. and Mrs. McCarthy for supporting and guiding her so well. And on a personal level, she is an amazing best friend, and I'm so excited.
Okay. We have one more very quick presentation, and then we'll take a five-minute break so these amazing students can go home and do some homework.
Good evening. Our new, full board.
Our new full board. It's great to see all five members back. I invite Jason Sutter to come on up. So we are pleased to announce the selection of a new Director of Educational Services, Jason Sutter. Jason will assume his duties on July 1st, 2019. For the past six years, Jason has been the principal at Presswood Elementary School in the Sonoma Valley Unified School District. Prior to his time in Sonoma, Jason was the principal at McNear Elementary School for four years, here in Petaluma City Schools. And before that, Jason was a technology coordinator at the Alameda County Office of Education. Jason received his bachelor's degree, teaching credential, administrative credential, and master's degree from Sonoma State University. Committee was very impressed with Jason's experience, accomplishments, and personal qualities. Jason's diverse experience will serve him well as our next Director of Educational Services. Throughout twenty-two years in public education, Jason has served as a teacher, a principal, a staff developer, and a regional coordinator. Jason understands the day-to-day challenges that each of these positions present and sees the opportunities to push our district forward. Jason sees the bigger picture, has led groups of teachers through district-wide curricular adoptions, he's developed programs for regional initiatives, and one of Jason's strengths is building consensus among diverse groups. Jason brings a strong skill set to our district and his ability to coach adults through the change process. Less quantifiable are the personal qualities Jason brings to this position. He brings a collaborative and easy way of working with people. He believes in clear and open communication to support building productive working relationships. Jason also has the quality to see opportunities instead of challenges and looks for win-win outcomes whenever possible. Jason is capable of tracking multiple projects simultaneously and brings a strong belief in putting students first.
Big up to Jason.
Jason, his wife, and their four children are thrilled to be back with the Petaluma City Schools family. Jason came highly recommended, and we could not be more excited that he will be joining Petaluma City Schools as our Director of Educational Services.
I've heard only good things.
Welcome, Jason. Thank you, Jason.
We're going to take a five-minute break, so if you need to leave, now we're going to start.
I'm like Maddie.
Every time Maddie clouds.
I'm sorry. Okay. We are recombining the meeting. And...
We'll get it next time.
We have one more presentation from the Petaluma Adult School. All right. Good evening, school board members, cabinet members, and secretary. The folks who are still remaining here. So I'm Nancy Emanueli. I'm the principal of Petaluma Adult School, and it's my pleasure this evening to present to you about our amazing programs. If you want to go to the next slide. So, I don't know if you know that Petaluma Adult School was founded a hundred years ago. I believe they're not. And we'll be planning a celebration next semester and inviting you to our sites. We are WASC accredited, and we are the only remaining adult education program in Sonoma County. We are a founding member of the Sonoma County Adult Education Consortium, and we have classes in Petaluma, San Rosa, and also in the city of Sonoma. I'm going to speak a little bit about our funding structure, next slide. So the adult education program is not funded with apportionment, with ADA. We are funded primarily through three different types of funding sources. Our federal grant, which is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Grant. The main source of our funding comes from the California Adult Education Funding Program. That's the main amount of our funding. And then we have a variety of competitive grants, which help fund our VONSA program, our early childhood education programs, and our Family Resource Center. And I'll talk a little bit more about the apprenticeship programs and the Cal Regional in just a couple minutes. So around $2 million budget, 742 active students. And most important part of our school is our students and our teachers, so I'm going to have them come and introduce themselves and talk to you a little bit about our programs. First, we have Lane Jan.
Welcome, and thank you so much for having us this evening. We're excited to tell you about our dynamic programs. And if you could show us the next slide, please. So we have a really robust English as a second language program. Approximately 100 students in the morning, approximately 80 students in the evening studying English, plus 25 students who are studying for US citizenship. So we offer three levels of English, from beginner to intermediate. Essentially, we are launching students and preparing them once they leave us to go on to the JC or to other college and career options. We've developed really great relationships within the consortium with the junior college and with groups like Job Link to provide wonderful opportunities for our students. Students range in age from seventeen all the way up to eighty. So wide-ranging group. As for our teachers, we have seven teachers, and we all have California education credentials. Some of us have master's degrees. We all speak two languages and some of us speak three. So I want to also, next slide, talk a little bit about career technical education. All of our ESL students receive instruction in digital literacy, because of course that's super important for preparing for college and career. And my colleague, who is the Career and Technical Education Coordinator, she also teaches a computer class specifically for English language learners, and she also offers individual career counseling. So now to tell you a little bit more about career technical education for English speakers. Here's Vera.
Good evening. My name is Vera Nickel, and I thank you for the opportunity to share an overview of the technology program for English speakers, for English-speaking students. The average age of our tech students is forty to eighty years old, with the youngest eighteen and the oldest thus far ninety-two. And sometimes that ninety-two-year-old, the ninety-two-year-olds are better proficient than the younger teens. It's been very interesting. The enrollment for my classes for the 2017-2018 school year was 220 students. Our core classes include basic PC and MacBook skills training, and for the career-focused, the Microsoft Office Suite and administration of typing tests. Other courses include iPad, social media, and Google Cloud products, to name just a few. Our tech lab is located on the McDowell Elementary Campus, where classes are held afternoons and evenings twice a week for two hours each. Instructor-led classes include 12 to 20 hours of instruction, and our self-guided career with certificate program is a full semester with 60 hours of training. Class sizes are between eight and 20 students each. Instructional technology in the lab includes a smart TV with Apple TV, a document camera, one MacBook, two iPads, 14 laptops, and six desktops. Students bring their own MacBooks and iPads to those classes. As a final note, the biggest challenge to our technology program is keeping up with the rapidly changing partner and software in our world. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Vera. Just a couple small pieces left on the slide here have to do with Cal Regional Medical Training and apprenticeship programs. So we partnered with Harper Rand Cal Regional to offer phlebotomy and clinical medical assisting programs. We are their LEA, so we're their local educational agency. We provide oversight through their curriculum, keep track of the accountability, and also their attendance and reporting. We also partner with two apprenticeship programs at this time. One of them is the waterproofers and roofers, and the other is the ironworkers. And so again, same thing, we are their LEA and handle accountability, curriculum, and other pieces for them. Okay, next slide. Oh, can we back up one more time? This is... I just have to do this. You've got to say it's cute, right? So that's Lane Jan, right in the middle. She's teaching a CPR class. This is for our VONSA parent education crew. So we'll hear more about that in a minute. Thank you, sorry for that piece. People are. I think that would be... Family Resource Center.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anna Cordova-Belic. I'm a family mentor at the Family Resource Center. I am one of three. The other one is Carla, you've known her, and Vicky Maiza, the coordinator. But she's unfortunately, she's not here. Family Resource Center service all the Petaluma City Schools and provides referrals for services and basic needs, weekly food bank, classes, workshops, crisis support, emergency assistance, parent leadership, parenting support, and liaison between parents and schools. Thank you.
Okay. All right, our next slide with parent education. We have three folks representing that a little bit each other.
My name is Diane Jean, and I teach at Petaluma Parent Nursery School. Where we... We've been offering cooperative preschool and parent education for over seventy years. I also teach a thirteen-week ready-to-learn program in the spring. And all of our parent education programs at Petaluma School really focus on imbuing the children with a love of learning and getting them ready and excited to attend the diverse and amazing opportunities that are awaiting them at Petaluma City Schools.
Good evening. My name is Carla Lutinos. I'm part of the GATE of the Last Program. I'm very proud of this program. I'm very proud that Petaluma had this national program. This is evidence program that we believe that the parents are the first and the more important teacher. We have program for, this is the ninth year, and we have provided service for 350 families and around there 450 children. This year, we expect to graduate 42 families and 54 children. Everybody's invited to the graduation. In order to graduate, the family need to participate one year academic year in the program. They come one week for one type of course, and we service the childrens on the three years and months who are pregnant.
Hi, everyone. My name is Serena Perez, and I'm early child, elder coordinator of childcare adult school. So we provide childcare for English, citizenship, computer, high-tech, parenting, high-tech, and culinary and craft classes. This year, we have provided childcare for 185 children. And this childcare also provides higher-party experience like an art, outside activities, circle time, story time. Thank you.
Okay, with parent education, so the next slide. And then also this is adult secondary education. Close to the last one. Or is there?
My name is Amy Jepa, and I am program manager and chancellor for High School Petaluma and High School Equivalency classes. So as Nancy had mentioned earlier, we cover all of Sonoma County, so we have classes in Petaluma, San Rosa, and Sonoma. We offer students a variety of pathways in which they can choose to access our curriculum. So we offer in-class support, independent study for those students who work and are able to attend classes on a weekly basis, and a blended model, which would encompass in-class learning as well as online curriculum. One of our goals is to provide students the opportunity to sample different methods. So for example, a lot of times students will come in and they really want to get a high school diploma, and then they'll start the program, see how long it takes to earn a credit, and then sometimes they'll switch to equivalency or vice versa. So we offer that freedom to kind of bounce and find that fit that fits them. Last fall, we added a career exploration class. And this has been really helpful for helping students get under that, from under that umbrella. A lot of times students think they want this one job. They don't know that 500 jobs that exist that are similar to that career. So they do that as part of their requirement for a diploma, and then we have a graduation meeting and help align them with the next step, so that seamless transition onto career or college is a little more seamless. Yeah, so our goal is not just to get students to graduate, it's also to really help transition them to where they want to go next in their lives. And that's in the next slide.
Okay, and we'll wrap it up here. The last program is our fee-based education. This is sort of like your Parks and Rec kind of program, so it's a revenue-neutral set of classes. Have some brochures to share with you this evening, but we're working art, movement, music, et cetera. And our last slide is our 2019 grads, yay! On beautiful photography by our amazing Asher Collin. So I'm very, very proud of our school, our staff, our students, and we're excited to have you come and visit any of our programs anytime. Please let us know if you'd like to come and take a look in and with us. Thank you so much for your attention this evening.
Thank you.
While those go around, you know, the little bit of background on this. I mean, we, I know it was loosely covered. We are the only game in town, adult education in Sonoma County. This is it. This is our program, and this is the program that we... This is a wonderful, I believe, a wonderful gift that we give to the entire county. And we're very, very fortunate that many years ago, not that many years ago, that the board chose during an economic recession to not cut the adult education program, and we're reaping the benefits of that now. It's weird seeing an adult education program presentation with now Vicky here. But, you know, the other thing, though, I think that made a big difference for us in really propelling the program under the new funding model that is in place, is we, three years ago, did some very centralized work and put them into a centralized location at McDowell that really, I think, has brought out more of a family resource center type of an approach. And we would probably be remiss if we didn't say that a lot of that work was done, some heavy lifting by Chris and Carol Waxman, who recently retired.
Can I ask a question, Nancy, or a comment and a question for you? Thank you for coming, all of you, and presenting. I'm really impressed by the direct services you all provide to the adults, and I hear about it every day from one of your teachers. But I also, as now a board member of this district, see a connection between the services you provide to the adults and community and the support to the families of K-12 students in our district. I'm a firm believer that the success of a child in K-12 is not only dependent upon the teachers in the classroom and the schools, but their family supports. And what I'm hearing in your presentation is a ton of family support being provided to the community. So what I wanted to ask you is, you know, can you describe for us that indirect service that the adult school provides in advancing our K-12 kids' student achievement by supporting their families?
Well, that's a good question, Mr. Jan. We're trying to keep it under ten minutes. I think I might just have to say that by the variety of different programs, it's really wraparound, it's really infant to elder, high school diploma, high school equivalency, parent education, for technical education. It's really all there. And so kind of our motto is, the better that adults do, obviously, the better that families and the community do. So that's sort of the way I would have to answer your question this evening. We plan to keep doing what we're doing.
Sounds great. Any other comments?
I have a little question about... So having been president of the Petaluma Parent Nursery School many years ago...
Our volunteers object to one of your meetings, or...
You what?
Our volunteers object to one.
I know, I know, and that's what happens. They wind up on the school board, which is wonderful. But I was wondering, first of all, do you still have those adult, you know, the parent education classes, Monday nights, you know, that we had to attend?
Yes, they're managed on Mondays, and we have them twice a month now.
And you what?
We have them twice a month now.
Okay, instead of every week. Yes, very good. And then I was wondering, they had some real issues. I've seen... I seem to recall, after my kids were long gone, that there was some issues keeping the nursery school going. And it was in different places. And so I was wondering, are you stable now? Do you feel that Pedaluma Parent Nursery will? I mean, I just think that a co-op like that, where you have that parent education, that, you know, it certainly saved me and probably my kids. You know, and we really need it to continue in the, in the community. So I was just wondering, do you feel like now it's kind of like in a place where it's gonna stay?
So Pedaluma Parent Nursery School is so needed and so wonderful. And we do have a very lovely home in McKinley. And in terms of sustainability, the co-op model in our community is problematic. So it's, by virtue of its model, it's challenging.
Yes, it always was.
So we are still very committed to go to supporting the Parent Nursery School co-op. So our cave funds can push in to support that as needed. But we have done a wonderful job of bringing fundraisers and having a strong parent board to keep it as sustainable as possible. We've actually in the last year seen the enrollment really rise. We were at around four, five, six families at the end of last year. And now we're up to eighteen.
Eighteen families. Are there ways that we can help? I mean, I don't know how the system works now in terms of, you know, because I think that they do feed into our schools. And, you know, the more we can help you, the better off our kids will be.
So I connected with board members just a day or so ago with a note, a letter. And please reach out to us. We're happy to give you tours of any of our facilities, have some private, you know, line group conversations about how anyone might wish to support our programs in any way. So we're very open and appreciative of the collaboration with Pedaluma City Schools.
And I can tell you that we're also working directly with them to try to improve some of their exterior areas of the preschool. And so we added, we relocated the two portals, so we're kind of consolidating. And we created an area where they can now have a garden. Still more work to do. Got some issues with some pavement and just their play structure is in desperate need of placement. But I think.
Maybe there's a path to safety.
So anyway, we're continuing to work directly with the teachers and the staff to try to find out how we can assist in redoing the play area. And I think if we can make it like a wow factor to try to have families really want to be part of it.
Thank you.
That was a wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
True. We have no comments from the public, no cards, no, cool, moving on. Report on activities and correspondence of school board members. Gateway to college site visit at the JC, Valley Vista site visit, PEF awards, community achievement awards, Carpe DM Open House, Casa Grande High School Sector Assembly and the East Side Band Festival. Okay, approval of consent agenda by consolidated motion. And it's kind of on. Do I have a?
I move to approve the consent agenda second.
And are there any comments about any of these items before we vote?
I have just a question, the same question I wanted to ask for clarification from Chris, I think. I just noticed a lot of contracts here and I don't have any issues there. But I did raise an issue, question in my mind about the criteria that we have established for selecting contracts. Can you speak generally about that? In particular, if there are any criteria dealing that favor locally owned or locally established businesses?
It's not a five-minute answer, but I'll try to give it, I'll try to give consent. So when it comes to purchases of stuff, we are under public contract code and we follow procurement procedures for doing that.
Sure.
When it comes to contracts, it depends on the type of service contract that we're looking at. So for example, when we brought, last year, meaning approval of our architectural contracts, we're required to do what's called a request for qualifications or proposal. So we did a very formal process and then we selected two from that process and brought them forward. When it comes to things like legal firms or when it comes to other kinds, like you'll see here, Jack Trader, for completing a development justification study. And typically we'll go for firms that have the greatest knowledge of our district. So Jack Trader did our last development justification study, for example. And we usually use a selection of law firms, whoever's got the greatest expertise in the particular area. So when it comes to can we use local, we always, as kind of a district policy, try to use as much local as we can. But we don't want to do that and not have the best either.
Right.
So if the best is local, we're gonna go local, if we have a choice. But when it comes to providing us with advice and counsel, so we want to use the best possible.
Thank you.
I don't know if that answers your question.
It does, yeah, thank you.
So any other, all in favor? I? Good, passed. Moving on. Action items. Resolution eighteen nineteen dash nineteen of the Board of Education, Pedaluma City Elementary and Joint Union High School Districts honoring the contributions of teachers to quality education, declaring the week of May sixth through tenth as the week of the teacher. And it should be a lifetime of the teacher, but we'll settle for a week. Do I have a motion?
I move to amend. I, it says children, and I think we just saw the adult school and how, what a wonderful asset they are. So I would just like to say that the teachers' contributions to children and adults. Or it's just students, students is fine.
Comments? Some motions?
Yeah, I would second that amendment.
Cool. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So did we officially pass that?
No.
Or do we just pass the amendment? Okay, so let's go back to, we have a motion for resolution eighteen nineteen dash nineteen honoring the contribution of teachers to quality education.
I move to approve amended.
And where, where did you want to add that?
Change children to students. Where is it?
It's on the resolution.
On the, declaring the week of May sixth as the week of the teacher.
It's on the.
The second whereas clause.
Oh, okay.
On the actual.
On the actual, on the actual resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. Amended student attendance calendar for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen for Kennelwood Junior High. Do I have a motion?
I'm trying to let other people move.
I move to, I move to adopt the amended student attendance calendar.
Perfect. Second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators in the Pedaluma City Elementary School District for two thousand nineteen.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Discussion.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure I get a feel for this demand. And I know this is not just us, the state has a teacher shortage. At the same time, I'm always, you know, worried about uncredentialed teachers, particularly in high need schools. So can we, can I get a feel for it?
So I think we have, how many, how many teachers fall under the non-credentialed status? These are, these are the majority of teachers who are usually in internship are in special ed, the consortiums, teachers who obviously high need, high demand position. And we're struggling to find, struggling to fill those positions. With that said, there are very few. We typically do not have any for, for regular education programs. It's, it's a unique specialty issue related to a special education credential.
Or EL, I think in this place.
Right.
In some situations, but that's, it's very typical for that. It usually is related to, to a designation and then somebody that's working on their credential. And it'll, the trigger only gets pulled on that after exhaustive search and we have to start the school year with a, with a staff number.
We just approved one recently.
We did.
But, and we use the induction, the North Coast teacher induction. So they provide interns, but there's a lot of eyes on those interns. So it's not like, here's your classroom, see you in June.
So are they usually interns, are they designated as interns?
Yeah, they need to have an intern credential. In order to teach, they have to have some sort of credential. So we're looking for fully credentialed teachers to enter our classrooms from day one. If we run through an exhaustive search and are unable to find a fully credentialed teacher, then we look for a teacher who can get an intern credential and work with that. Intern whether it's North Coast school education, whether it's in the state, whether it's.
Dominican, I would say Dominican.
So is this around the same number that we've declared the need for over the last couple years?
It's kind of a pro forma declaration.
Do they tend to, is there any cluster of those positions that you want, school or any subject?
We only have a few of the interns, it's typically special education.
And there's a huge shortage of special ed teachers. I was offered a long term set, and I'm not a special ed teacher, it's just a friend of mine.
When we talk about a special education, we're typically not talking about RSP or SDCs classes. We're talking about.
Modernist experience.
Modernist experience. Because remember, we're, we also, that's a great question to ask. Because we're the LEA for the South County Consortium. So we do all the hiring for those placements that are at Cinnabar with us, with Old Adobe. Sometimes those, those will pop up.
Thank you.
Okay. Did we move down a second?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good. And Declaration of Need for Fully Qualified Educators in the Pedaluma Joint Union High School District for two thousand nineteen. So moved, do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good, okay, discussion. First reading of Pedaluma City Schools Governance Handbook.
So the board went, the board went about their due diligence and started met with, had a study session with our CSBA consultant and developed an initial draft for a governance handbook that hasn't existed in any recent memory. Certainly couldn't find one.
Couldn't find one.
And then an ad hoc committee closed up, trustee Webster.
President Webster.
Trustee Cloud.
Trustee Cloud.
And trustee. And trustee Cloud. Met with me to go over the changes that the board had discussed at the, at our, at our study session. And we're bringing it forward for a first read. If there's any changes that you, you think we need to make, certainly send them our way.
You need change dates as they can see.
Yes.
You need pages of what?
Change dates as they can see instead of.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And then we'll bring it back.
Oh, good.
For, for a vote.
And it's very, there's a lot in here, norms, goals. So I think we did a pretty good job personally.
Should we send any comments just to?
Send comments to Mary and Michelle. Is, is there a way that Shelby could have the original so that you can see what we changed? I mean, the original that she, she gave us.
Was a hard copy.
This one?
I wonder if I have one.
I have all the changes.
Like took out half of it.
Well, and you know what, if you want to look through this, this is the original. And I can see we made a lot of changes. So if you just want to skim through that, we got rid of a lot of the CSBA lingo that we just thought was overwhelming. But so you're more than welcome to read this.
You'll get it.
Thank you. Okay, business services, new administrative regulations and exhibit, charter school facilities, and charter school oversight.
So as you took action on approving the new board policies, and just as a refresher, we eliminated the two thousand two board policy and added five new policies to replace it. This is the administrative reg and exhibit that goes with it. And again, most of this is driven by law and by legal citations. So it's very technical. And then you'll see that there's a legal citation after almost every single paragraph.
Yeah, and there's, yeah.
It's really embedded in what.
If we have an issue, we can really take it up with the state.
Yeah, kinda, yeah.
But it's, 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 it's good because it's guideline since we do have several charter schools in our district. Okay, and then finally, educate.
Oh, I just have one question. So this would apply, all of these apply for both dependent and independent charters?
Yes.
And private?
Yes, generally speaking, it applies to any board charters.
Okay, and Fair Education Act. I believe that's Miss Campbell.
It is, it is. So I, I wanted to kind of do a recap for the benefit of a new board member. So this was, so board member Quinn brought this up in January, I think.
Probably in January.
In future business and wanted to know about implementation in our district of the Fair Act. So, you know, left that meeting, met with superintendent the next day or the day after. And, you know, talked about a, a plan to gather that information from our staff. And then I submitted in March, I think. Kind of a summary of what I found out by, by going out and talking to staff. I mean, with our K-12 curriculum committee. And then I had some next steps and some plans there. So I'd be happy to share the, what I submitted to the superintendent with you so you can get the background a little more.
You can send it to me too.
Sure, yeah, I can send all of it to you. So just, just as far as background goes, so the Fair Education Act, fair, accurate, inclusive, and respectful Act was signed into law in two thousand eleven and it amended the history, social science, history, social studies framework. And there was already an ed code in there that spoke to including the roles and contributions of traditionally marginalized groups. And it added in some others. So it added in Mexican-Americans, Asian-Americans, European-Americans, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender Americans, and persons with disabilities. And then it also added not just members of ethnic groups or cultural groups. So it fundamentally changed the framework. So that was signed into law two thousand eleven. And then in two thousand twelve, it became law. And then the history, social science framework that the state updates periodically was updated in two thousand sixteen with those changes. So you can see the timeline here, how things go. So typically when, when we update, when the state updates standards or frameworks, it's followed by instructional materials submissions by publishers to the state. Review period, state board of education reviews it, opens up to public comment, and then eventually approves materials K eight. For high school, they don't approve materials, but materials are out there that you can adopt on a district-wide basis. So the state used to set aside instructional materials, adoption, funds. I don't know how long it's been, but they stopped doing that a few years back and just said, hey, you have the money in your budget, you plan for it. So our district at some point fell out of that cycle. So the state still follows the cycle of updating, updating frameworks, approving instructional materials, and then they move on to the next subject. So they have, they have a, a schedule on their website of what they do for all of the core subjects. So our district fell out of that cycle at some point. When my director and I came, the district had just adopted K eight math, and even some high school math. And then we went through a process with ELA, ELD. At the time, that was what we considered to be our most important need, especially for the needs of our English and Roadmap. And then we've been working with our science folks as the next kind of easy area because in GSS, frameworks were just adopted, materials were, were being looked at. Well, what was skipped over in all this was history, social science, right? Because that was two thousand twelve. So in trying to figure out where we are with this, we, we met with our K-12 curriculum committee. We have, we haven't met with them since the last time. So we meet with them next week on Thursday. We're gonna be developing a subcommittee to do what we, a similar plan of what we've been doing with the English and Roadmap. So if you recall, we came and presented. So, if you recall, we came and presented a couple of board meetings ago. And so far, that's been the most successful model of rolling out changes in information. So, we have, you know, have key players who then train our subcommittees, who train our larger committees, who then go out and present and train at sites. So, clearly, in this inquiry, that is what is needed. Because most folks either aren't aware of it or don't realize it only applies, or it specifically applies to history social science framework. In all this talk about, you know, marginalized groups and different supports in different areas and updated human interaction frameworks and things like that, they can be confused as one, you know, one thing, but it's history social science.
I have a quick question though. You talked about ELA and it would seem to me that that would be another excellent place to be incorporating literature and nonfiction from, you know, no more dead white guys only. Which, and you know, as an English teacher, that's what it was. And then, you know, I tried to change it a little bit. So, I'm just kind of curious about where that fits in.
Yeah, so there's actually plenty of great resources that point to how the Fair can be implemented not just in history social science, but in other areas.
Yeah, I saw that online.
That's right, I think I, I think I...
Yeah, I saw it online.
No, I just went online.
So, I think that there's, just to kind of fill in there, there's, like, I know there was questions. There's two, two things related to this. One, one related to, because I know people that were on the framework committee when they were leading this place, that the English Language Arts folks do not speak with the social science folks. So, they had to...
They should be...
And they weren't going through their frameworks at the same time. So, they had to put it to ensure that it was there somewhere. They had to put it into a framework. So, they chose social studies. As it relates to social studies, why was social studies skipped over? Because at the time, social studies was the framework that was big looked at. That was during the heat of the Great Recession. So, the state said during that time, you don't have to adopt new materials. We know that you are spending these dollars just to stay afloat. So, you can, whatever you're currently using, we're going to grandfather in until times get better. So, that when times did get better and funding came back, English Language Arts and mathematics as two monsters were first in line. So, it just kind of was skipped. It was intentionally skipped throughout the states. Because nobody had any money to do any, any adoption on that.
So, going forward, Ben, will there be just adoption discussion about...
Yeah, so our, so our current cycle is, we're currently looking at in GSS, science materials, which were just approved in November, January by the state. So, we took our science committee and jumped on the first vendor fair that was out, which was in Marin County, SCO's not holding one. So, we started down that process with K-8 and we brought some high school folks. With the high school folks, we're peeling off a little bit and we're most likely going to come back at our next board meeting and do a presentation with you about some of those concerns. Depending on what happens with high school in GSS, they may want to, we may want to postpone that review and pilot for another year, which would mean we could move up history social science.
It would just, it would seem to me that no matter what you're reading, I mean, there were marginalized groups that are scientists and they're, you know, so it would seem to me that the, the main idea of the Fair Act is to imbue the curriculum in all areas so that it's not just, you know, dead white guys.
Yes, but, as it relates to K-8, the publishers didn't write the curriculum for science with that standard in it, does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
So, it would have to be teacher, our teachers have done, which is part of the challenge, some of our teachers have done a great job of pulling items.
So, how is the district, can we initiate scaling that up and making it available to all of our teachers?
Right, so that's part of the following process, similar to the roadmap. So, at our next K-12 curriculum meeting, which is next Thursday, we'll be forming a subcommittee to look at just this, implementation of Fair Act, educating staff, using our PD days, the June 3 days, already planned, but probably use one of the August days to do that. And there are actually, there are great resources out there for, well, they existed before this. It was how to implement the Fair Act while awaiting instructional materials adoptions.
And I know there's no money or teeth in the Fair Act anymore, so...
No, but it's part of our budgeting for adoption cycles. But there are some great resources, which include links to other subjects. There's specific examples for literature, so how, you know, How's on Mango Street? And there's, there's plenty of examples on how you can, you know, meet, you know, meet the spirit of the Fair Act in other subjects besides history, history social studies. So, we'll be sharing those resources as we work with them.
Would it serve any purpose for us as a board to, you know, tell the committees and the subcommittees that we would like them to look at cross-curricular adoption of, or I don't know what is adoption, but curriculum around the Fair Act? I mean, so that they're considering it along with just history and how it can be applied?
Yeah.
Or is that to...
No, the K-12, that group is the perfect audience to hear that message.
Okay, so we can send that message then?
So, what time is it?
You can send it through me, you can come.
Or just when, it's Thursday?
It's Thursday, 8:30 next week.
8:30 AM here?
Yep.
So, part of what...
It's all day.
Part of what we, what we need to really have a focus on when we start looking at our budget and we start looking multi-year is we have to, we want to focus on, Chris is talking about consideration on restricting some dollars and setting some dollars aside for adoptions. Because as these, similar to technology, as these adoptions are coming, if we don't put the dollars aside for those, then we're going to have to move a little bit slower than we would like to, maybe, you know, and maybe just starting with one, you know, we'd rather hit it in a, in a, in a year with a lot of these things. It makes the most sense to do that, so by subject, by year. But putting those dollars away and looking, you're always looking two or three years out as it relates to what's coming down, you know, what's coming down that pipe.
Well, I would say, and just, just as a brief history lesson on the funding piece, Great Recession, December 2007, oh seven, oh eight was solid from a fiscally funded year for schools. Oh eight, oh nine is when the Great Recession hit schools, public education, at least the non-basic aid ones. They did the Tier Three, Tier Two, some of you may remember, funding. A lot of the state categoricals went to either Tier Two or Tier Three. Tier Three being full flexibility. That was the formerly known as the IMFRP or the Instructional Materials Realignment Fund. And so, essentially, they cut everything 20% and then they rolled it into full flexibility. They never restored the 20% to Step 5. So, it's something that, I always like to remember, remind people, we really only got 80% back when they did the LCFF. So, when, the whole idea was they were eventually restoring category, but then the LCFF came into being in 1213, that was Governor Brown's whole baby. And so, everything got rolled into unrestricted money. All of the, including things like economic impact aid, which was very restricted in the past. So, everything got rolled into local control. And we survived on that. And now, when the adoption started happening, when I first got here, we started carving money out through the LCAP process. And we set aside around $400,000, $450,000, $600,000, depending on the year, in the unrestricted budget. We also are restricting all of our Prop 20 lottery funds specifically for textbook adoptions. So, for the high school district, for example, most of the textbook purchases that they've done, we've been able to balance using the majority of the Prop 20 money under lottery that we're, that we're receiving. So, it's a combination of unrestricted and Prop 20 lottery. And that was a culture shift here, by the way.
Yeah, because it was strategically what we decided to do, which, which puts us in a much better situation financially, is take your most restrictive funds, funds that can only be spent for a certain use and ensure that you spend those first in the areas that they're designed. And you take your, your most flexible funds and you spend those last. Because it gives the, it gives the board, it gives the district the most options on what to do with those dollars. That was a big change, that was a big change that we went about, because it meant some procedural differences at the school side.
We were using Prop 20 lottery for five hundred and fifty. So, we, we moved to using it for textbook adoption. And then the last thing I would add is, we also had set aside two years ago, 1.5 million in the unrestricted income balance as a board designated for curriculum adoptions. And as we move forward, we've reduced that. And for those of you who are here for a second round, there was 700,000 still sitting there. So, that's specifically around these types of textbook adoptions. It's kind of holding some money aside to do some of that. Because we know we've got a lot of catch-up. I mean, men, most districts did nothing during the Great Recession. So, we kind of lost five or six years of buying textbooks, a whole cycle essentially, because they're usually once every seven years.
Although today, those history books will be...
Well, I think my point is more that there's a lot we can do outside of textbooks in the meantime. We don't need to buy new textbooks. We know about the people that are doing the work.
Well, and I think the thing that's also come in is Common Core also kind of changed help. So, you know, there's all of these things that kind of happened during this particular period of time. And Common Core, you know, a lot of teachers got away from using textbooks anyway. They were making their own units and we actually saw significant impacts on our copiers, for example.
And they used to open source materials. So, let me, let me share a little bit more about where we're going. Get on the funding, get on the funding and the, and the cycle. So, that's kind of at least where we, you know, how we got where we were with that adoption cycle. So, when we do review materials, it has to be open for public review, for, for social content. And that has been controversial in some communities. So, you know, that, that potentially could be something that comes up as are the materials. Elk Grove, most recently, kind of the fifth largest district in the state, they had a large public interest in this from, you know, not that it should be sides, but in essence, from two different sides. Those in favor of, you know, implementation of materials option and those concerned about some of the, some of the changes to the framework. And that was echoed by at least one or two staff members at our last curriculum meeting. While there are resources for what you can do in the meantime, there were some staff that expressed concern in potentially being, I don't know if liable is the right word, but, you know, for, for parents who are concerned, without any district guidance and without any district, I guess decree, I guess, for lack of a better word, concern that they were out there by themselves. They were selecting and reviewing materials. So, what was appropriate, appropriate material? So, that was interesting, because, you know, I think most people obviously are, you know, are favored by Fair Act.
Well, that's why I brought it, which is why I'm bringing it here, to see how we as a district can make it so that there is fair curriculum for our teachers in the meantime.
Well, I would have a different concern, actually. I know it's been brought up before, like the bias training. So, it's like, I don't want someone teaching my child about Mexican-American history or Black history who has an unconscious, an unconscious bias towards those groups of people. So, I don't know if that's like a whole other can of worms, but that hurts a concern for me. People teaching about something that they are biased against without realizing it.
That's definitely a fine.
And that is a whole other can of worms.
Yeah, and I know, I know it's been brought up before, like professional...
Yeah, one of our, yeah, one of our priorities is to have, I mean, I think... Totally decided, you know, to have implicit bias training that is really, you know, comprehensive.
That's a PD thing.
And it's a legitimate concern about the, what trustee Plow brings up, because this was the issue that came up when districts have struggled with the, what they call the advisory period. And during the advisory period, they were throwing, they were throwing curriculum in front of teachers and asking them to teach counseling-related materials during advisory. And some, some people were, were really ill-prepared to be able to do that. And there's a lot of concepts that, you know, if, some of the curriculum, the curriculum itself can be a wonderful thing and need to be taught, but it has to be also delivered by, by the right individual. So, it's, it's, it's a tricky thing. And, you know, obviously, as we know, we don't have a standardized, we don't have a standardized...
Eric?
Sorry, the similar problem with the flyers that we do for Section 11. I've been approached as a community member, a community member often, saying, I'm not going to be comfortable talking about these things. Why am I in the position of doing them without having that ability to, to really resonate? So, those are, those are huge cans of worms, and lots of them.
So, that'll be something that's part of the subcommittee work, is identifying, you know, vetted resources that we can point teachers to. And there are great resources that point specific spots in the curriculum where you can include certain things. So, there's certain grades where we teach specific California history standards, specific US history standards. So, you know, staff needs that type of resource, something from the district that says, you know, here are vetted resources, these are all great to use. Because there was just, you know, that feeling of uneasiness shared by a couple people about, what if I just grab something out there on my own?
Well, and I'm sure it's, you heard it from a couple people, but I'm sure it's on the minds of a lot more than just a few.
So, then I did want to add one more thing. So, Casa Grande High School, Eric was here earlier, has, has really jumped on this. And there's a student group, you probably know some of the students from some of the junior activities. So, the principal met with, you know, some students and kind of included them in this work and kind of spreading the word at Casa. So, they formed a group, they've met a few times, they're developing a staff survey around, you know, just knowledge and awareness and advocating for, for, for the Fair Act, including these, these things in their lessons. They call themselves the Justice League.
That's wonderful.
And they're actually meeting this week, this week on Thursday to finalize their, their staff survey. So, so kind of hitting this from a different angle. So, you got the district angle and, you know, for those who've been teachers before, when things come down from the district, you know, we're received differently.
Can you say, roll your eyes?
Although that's important, getting it from the students, right? Getting it from the students, hitting it from a different, a different angle and why it matters to them as students in some of these groups, so.
That's great.
They're really doing, they're really doing great.
Wonderful. And you know, if you have, you know, it, it, it's, all of these are complementary as a, as a classroom teacher, to be able to have those district vetted resources, but also know that students want and that students also have input in some of these.
I'd love to have them present.
I'd love to hear them, the Justice League, oh my God.
Yeah, can you...
Yeah, please, ready back?
Have they presented before? Maybe our second, maybe the second May meeting?
Yeah, yeah. Is that, May 28?
Yeah.
That would be great.
I'm saying yes for them, so.
I'm sure, I'm sure they will.
You know, several of us have gone to talk to classes at Casa and those, I doubt those students would have any problem presenting. They're very articulate.
With what is the ultimate of vetting and approval process of whatever comes out of this committee? Is it committee's decision or how does this work?
So, well, we're gonna, we're gonna, well, we'll vet as a, as a subcommittee the different resources that are out there that other districts are using, have vetted already. So, we'll, we'll basically, we're going to create a Google shared doc with resources by grade level, including not just history social science, but potential ELA resources as well. So, basically, kind of like a clearinghouse document, kind of your one-stop shop, that'll be shared with sites, shared with staff.
And I'm sure they'll find that very helpful. Instead of saying, this is what you have to teach, it's presented as, here's the resources that...
You can incorporate.
You can incorporate.
Right, so instead of, instead of, you know, a bunch of links, we'll create one home document that has all those resources.
Okay, future business.
Can we, you called on...
I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm a member of the public, is it okay to talk for it?
Absolutely.
I just wanted to address a concern about the professional development, I guess, question. And just mention that there's some... and just mention that there are some groups of parents, I guess, that are kind of actively trying to initiate some work around that. The group is called TIDE, it's the Team for Inclusivity, Diversity, Equity in Public Schools, and a lot of what, with a lot of, I think it's very early, it's just kind of formed in the last couple months, that I think what's being looked at partly is like, what types of trainings would need to be funded and what would be helpful. And I think they're trying to get inter-representatives from individual campuses, like parent representatives. Again, it's very, it's very new, but I think there's definitely interest with regard to, yeah, the special development piece, for kind of broadly speaking, with regard to equity, universal inclusion, and also things like implementing the Fair Act. So I think if you're looking to come on the district-sponsored committee, and I think someone's already in touch with you all about that.
We met Sarah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. It's good to know. Okay, future business.
Study session. So I reached out to, well, you, I reached out to, and we were looking at May, Monday, May 20th.
Oh, I have the 30th. I thought it was the 30th.
I have the 30th.
Yeah, I do too.
Is it? Oh, maybe it's the 30th. Hold on.
I just.
Yes, the 30th. It's, no, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the. It is the 30th. 20th, 30th, this is the same thing.
So it's May 30th?
It is May 30th, from five o'clock, it'll probably be a couple hours. We're hoping to get Casa Grande. I met with David Sher, David, our Director of Innovation and Technology, and we've kind of drafted something, I'm asking you to read it, kind of give you a sense for what we're shooting for that evening.
I'd really like to hear from students then, of that thing.
Okay. Do you want to give it a go?
Sure, so this is a, a new case that we were working on to set out to teachers, and with the audience being secondary teachers, so your secondary teachers and administrators, on Thursday, May 30th, 2019, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, the Pedalwood City Schools Board of Education will hold a special study session on the use of technology in our secondary schools. Topics to be explored will include the next steps for the one-to-one iPad program, teacher computer replacement, 21st century learning, and more. Learning and Innovation Committee will be presenting a recommendation for replacing student devices, beginning with high school in the fall of 2018. Subsequent planning for grades TK through eight will follow. The intended outcome of the study session is board action on the high school student device refresh, refresh plan, including a timeline and type of device. The Learning Innovation Committee is a group of PCS teachers and administrators who have been meeting monthly to develop plans to implement their recommendations included in a technology audit called the Joint Educational Technology Jet Review. The committee has developed a process for identifying the next steps for a one-to-one iPad program that has included presentations at faculty meetings, technology survey, pilot of emerging technologies, and a special study session for, and then, bowl, please consider attending. Teachers and administrators are encouraged to participate in the study session so that the PCS board can take all perspectives into account when making decisions about the future of technology in our district. Decisions based on this special study session could have an impact on technology in your district and our district for the next four years, so it is imperative that all people be represented. The focus of this meeting will be high school representatives from other grade levels are encouraged to, to attend, thinking of a way to tie a connection to junior high and also being secondary. We haven't quite worked that piece out yet.
David, I have a question. I have the jet review December 2017, so that was, there's nothing since then, as far as, I mean, this is, when you mentioned the jet review in your letter, is there a more recent one in December?
No, that's it.
Okay, and maybe, I, I have a copy, I don't think they, is there a way to get the rest?
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get a copy out, sent out. The jet review is the, basically, our internal study that we have done, about where, where we needed to go moving forward. You know, our, our goal is to, to get discussion going. We've put, we've put a committee in charge to, to do some piloting work. They're going to come with some recommendations. My recommendation to the board is we make it as informal a process as possible, so that we give an audience to the people that did the work to share their thoughts regarding a tool, but then we go into small group work. And literally, we spread out into groups of, of three to five people in, that are participating, so we have a board member in each different group. We talk not only about the tool that was shared and the recommendation, and what the pros and cons of that, that recommendation might be, but also we talk about where, where do you see technology going in the district? And then we go through some type of a process where we bring groups together, but allow them to do, to make it really interactive and not everybody sitting and one person talking. So short of the initial first presentation, we would get out, do some work, and I, we would probably coordinate it to keep us moving, and then kind of come together and synthesize the information and see where we are as far as some general trends that, that this will help assist us with sharing information on our June 3rd professional development meeting, which is going to be on technology. But it'll also potentially give us some direction of where we, to see what comfort level are we at with the recommendation from committee, or do we need to do additional work to adopt or for a pilot?
Where is this one to be?
Here.
We're thinking it's going to be Casa Grande.
Oh, it's going to be Casa.
We think that's, if we can make, if we can make that facility work for us, that would be the better facility.
And you're sending this out to all staff? Or secondary staff?
Yeah, we were, originally got a target towards secondary certificated staff, but then we were still discussing the expanding potential.
Because there's, and then there'll be, so there's such concern on the part of a lot of parents on one-to-one devices in elementary, so if they're not part of this process, I think it may be a problem.
Well, so here's what we.
Are you going to have another one that's going to discuss elementary?
Yes, so.
Because they're very different, I understand.
What we're going to do is, we, we're going to, here's the, here's the tricky part. The process that we, we want to go through with high school this year is the same process that we want to replicate with TK through eight next year. But that doesn't, doesn't communicate well in an email, because then people are going to be emailing back, well, what about elementary? What about, so we want to do our own elementary or TK through eight email regarding that. Having said that, though, we need, we need particularly Pedalwood Junior and Kennerworth staff there for this. Because they may come up with issues that we haven't thought about.
Yeah, so Kennerworth is the first site to, to do the first trials, so they definitely ask a lot to say, either side, but that's the day of our promotion.
It's in the morning, the promotions in the morning.
Yeah, it's the only day we got.
And for the high school teachers, they'll be grading papers, the second day of finals.
True, but it's something that needs to happen if we want to have that refreshing time for the new school year.
I, and go earlier, because that week is not a good time to draw a crowd.
Yeah, I, I'm with you, it's, there, there literally wasn't, here's our challenge, that if we select any date earlier than the week of the 22nd, or the 22nd of May, we haven't given enough time to do the pilot. And there's literally an event that takes place every day that, the rest of the year. So we looked at the 29th, which was all dead, graduation. We looked at the 28th, we can't do that because we have a Board of Education meeting and we can't make that a study session. We have to do the, the work there. The 27th is Memorial Day, so it just keeps going. So if we.
What about if we did, oh, sorry.
Yeah. If we, we even looked at, at what was even the feasibility of doing it on the 3rd of June, and we thought, there's no way people are going to stay once, once the year is over. So we, we, we lose everyone after that. So we don't, we don't really have much of an option. What we try to do is, is work closely with the principals at them working and getting, getting the right people there to, to, that are not, we want to hear from people that are not piloting. We know we're going to hear from the pilot folks. We want to hear from the people that at least five, we don't have to have a whole crew, but if we have five to 10 from each high school that are not piloting, so that they can give, because a lot of people don't want to pilot, but then they're not happy when the recommendation comes. So it's a tricky thing as it relates to any adoption.
Yeah. What about if we did it before the school board meeting? Like at 3?
That would require all the board members to be able to make that, that was the issue.
Oh, that's right.
Our issue was the, is, because we couldn't do it.
Yeah, no, and, thinking of teachers, but, no, work or bees.
Here's the thing, though, the thing is that, as it relates to this initiative, I think we're going to have a really good sense at the end of that night whether we're ready to do a refresh or we need to do a pause. I think we'll have a really good sense at that point, from listening to whatever that the pilot teachers tell us and from what we hear from the folks that do participate. So it's, it's, it's just another step in the process to pick a way.
And if you could have some kind of students also, that would be great, because I know they have lots to say.
Yes, they have.
Yes, they do.
We'll be, I didn't mention this, there's other parts of the process where we're gathering input from students, both qualitatively and qualitatively. So we should represent that and try to get them there if we can, and that's for state school. We'll certainly have both the quantitative and qualitative data.
You just need to know that they're invited if they so choose.
Absolutely.
Okay, I think.
Oh, I have other things. Sorry.
Do it.
Goals and objectives, I think I mentioned, mentioned this earlier, I want, I was just wondering if we could have a discussion about the process for goals and objectives after seeing what happened with the city council, goals and objectives meeting, that, and it was similar to what we used to have a long time ago in the district, where it was at Lucasey, and the board was all available, and people came and had a variety of issues that they wanted us to look at and prioritize. And it was really interactive, there were really a lot, it was just fabulous. And the city council just had one a month ago, maybe, and it was really successful. It had lots and lots of input from the whole community. And so I was just thinking that our goals and objectives meeting is in July, and I'd really like to look into whether we could do something, I don't know whether it's, like to get it going this year, if we could, just to have something so that maybe not here, maybe someplace else where people really felt like they could come and, and give us what they're thinking.
They put it back together in three or four months, because that was all the new city manager.
Yeah, they, I, they must have gotten it together pretty quick. And I can, we can, I can find out how they did that, if that helps.
Who put it together?
Pick one, the new city manager.
Yeah, and so if you want me to, but I don't know, that's just something that I'd like to, would you guys?
Yeah.
Definitely.
Okay, all right. I will check with Trudy.
I'll check, I can call back.
Okay, okay.
Okay. We have to adjourn back to closed session. We have some, some info from Mr. Rose to consult, and so I'm going to adjourn the meeting to closed session at 7:00.